Good afternoon and a warm welcome to the Mill Valley Rotary Club City Council Candidate Forum. Please silence your cell phones as a courtesy to everyone in the room. We want to thank the League of Women Voters for providing a moderator, timekeeper, and question sorter for this event. You'll notice there's file cards on the tables and pencils. Please fill out any questions you may have on the file cards and get them to me as soon as possible so we can use them in the program. So we also want to thank the Mill Valley Chamber of Commerce for funding the cost of a videographer. It's $500, very kind of them, plus our gratitude to all the candidates for participating in this forum. This year, the League will celebrate 104 years of following a mission to empower voters and defend democracy. Hosting and moderating candidate forums is an important part of their vision of a democracy where every citizen has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League is a strictly nonpartisan organization and never supports or opposes individual candidates or political parties. Unauthorized videos are not allowed because the FCC requires that a forum must not be edited. It must be broadcast in entirety either live or reasonably soon after it takes place. The League wants to ensure that information is not manipulated to create false or misleading impressions. No candidate is allowed to use or edit the footage for campaign purposes. We encourage you, the audience, to submit questions on the file cards on your tables. Just raise your hand and someone will be along to collect them. And now I want to hand you over to our moderator, League member, Lynda Dear. Thank you, Lynda.
Oh, you're out. Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Hello and welcome to this candidate forum presented by the Mill Valley Rotary Club, the Mill Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the League of Women Voters of Marin County. Hello. I am Lynda Dear, a member of the Marin League and your moderator for this afternoon. With me are Caroline Silverstein, our timekeeper, and Carol Inkless, our question sorter. The five candidates here with us tonight are running to fill three seats on the Mill Valley City Council. This legislative body serves Mill Valley's residents and businesses by setting policy and resolving public issues. In addition, the council provides direction for Mill Valley's city manager, boards, and commissions. The candidates with us this afternoon are Urban Carmel, Leah Curtis, Caroline Joakim, Catherine Jones, and Mike Koo. Mike, do you have enough room there? Are you okay? Great. Before we get started, let's quickly review a few ground rules. As Bob said, please take a minute to silence your cell phones and any other noise-making device. Candidates are asked not to interrupt one another and to refrain from any personal attacks. Candidates and audience members are expected to be respectful at all times. Because the League is strictly nonpartisan and follows Federal Election Commission rules for candidate forums, no campaign materials, including buttons, signs, brochures, and T-shirts, are permitted in the room. The Mill Valley Chamber of Commerce has arranged to record this forum and will post the recording on its website. In addition, the video will be available on the League of Women Voters website at www.marinlvw.org. Please note the signs posted on the walls of the room. Your presence here tonight constitutes permission to use your likeness on the air. We encourage audience members to submit questions on the index cards provided. Just raise your hand and Carol will come out and pick them up. Each candidate has been invited to make a one-and-a-half-minute opening statement. We'll begin with Urban Carmel.
Hi, everybody. My name is Urban Carmel. I'm the current mayor of Mill Valley. Thank you very much for hosting this forum. I was here almost five years ago when I ran for city council the first time. So I've been on the council for the last five years nearly. Before being on the council, I was the chair of the Planning Commission. I was the president of Library Foundation. I was the president of the Old Mills Site Council. I was the head of the Buildings and Grounds for the West Point Inn, and I was a soccer commissioner for almost 10 years. I've been very busy while I've been on the city council. I headed up our housing element. I've been the head for affordable housing development at Hamilton Drive for the last two years. I headed up our climate action plan for the city. I am our council representative on the Transportation Authority of Marin. I was the lead in setting up our new commission that deals with traffic and mobility in our city. I have been on the Chamber of Commerce Board for the past four years, and I was a member of the Business Vitality Panel during the pandemic. I've been the chair of the Finance Committee for the city. I've been involved in a lot of different things in the city. It's been very busy. I have got a lot of other things that we want to get accomplished over the next four years, so I'm looking forward to a second term on the city council to finish what we started and then to go happily into council retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for having us here and for the opportunity. I'm Leah Curtis. I've lived in Mill Valley for the better part of the last decade. I'm a long-term renter, new mom of nine days, and happy I could be here today. Thank you. Thank you for the lunch. So my background is in disaster management, emergency preparedness, community resilience, building on the volunteerism that the Rotary believes so much in, and all of us do as well. I've been a volunteer for many of the years that I've been here in Mill Valley, a disaster response volunteer in my own neighborhood and community. I chair the Emergency Preparedness Commission for the city of Mill Valley, and I work in our local fire district as an emergency management coordinator. So my heart and soul is in community, is in volunteerism, is in being open-minded to the different ways that I've seen our community live and want to live, but remembering that it's about the whole community. It's about all of us as Mill Valley together, and I would love to be part of that in the city, in the council, bringing my expertise and my background and my a little bit unique perspective to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming out, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and Mill Valley Rotary for hosting this candidate's forum. My name is Caroline Joakim, and I currently serve on Mill Valley City Council. Mill Valley has been my home for the last 20 years. I raised a family here, practiced law, and volunteered extensively in our community, at our schools, through the library, with local businesses, the youth sports leagues, and on various service projects, as well as Marin villages. My love for our town is what led me to run in the special election in 2023. So this is my second election in two years. Since joining the council, I have worked on a variety of issues, collaborated with others, and listened to community concerns. I've launched initiatives, including Neighborhood Chats, a Beautification Brigade, and Live Well, Mill Valley. These programs are all aimed at boosting community engagement and making Mill Valley more age and disability friendly. I'm running for reelection to build on this progress and also to address issues crucial to Mill Valley's future. I have a number of priorities on the website, but my top three are emergency preparedness and safety, addressing aging infrastructure, and creating affordable housing options. It's been a privilege to serve, and I hope to continue for the next four years. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thanks. Catherine?
Hi. Thank you to the Rotary Club and the League of Women Voters for hosting today. My name is Catherine Jones. I am a native of Sausalito. I'm a mother to three young children. I'm an attorney and conservationist, and I'm running for city council because I believe deeply in public service. I love Mill Valley, and I want to work to ensure a future in which our community is safe, vibrant, and welcoming. I grew up playing for Mill Valley Soccer Club and running cross-country on the trails of Mount Tamalpais. I have devoted... Sorry. I'm not sure if that's my mic. Hello. I have devoted my career to local public service. I've worked for local public agencies and environmental nonprofits. At Marin County Parks, the Trust for Public Land, and the Golden Gate National Park's Conservancy, I worked collaboratively to secure public funding for projects to protect and restore public lands, improve bike and pedestrian access and safety, build playgrounds and parks, and make Marin more resilient to the threats of sea level rise and climate change and wildfires. I also have experience working through complex and contentious land use and planning issues as a long-term planner with the Marin Community Development Agency. In Mill Valley, I serve on our Parks and Rec Commission. I coach girls soccer, boys soccer, girls lacrosse, and initiated our Neighborhood Firewise community. If elected, my priorities will be to make our community more resilient to a changing climate, invest in community infrastructure, and others. And I'm excited to bring a fresh perspective to the city council. I thank you for your time. Sorry.
Thank you. Mike?
Good afternoon, everyone. I think we've done this a number of times now, and I always say these are really four difficult acts to follow, and I think it gets more and more difficult every time we do this. So I'll do my best here. My name is Mike Koo. Again, thank you to everybody, all the sponsors who put this on. Thank you for your time to have us here to speak with you today. I'm a Foreign Service Officer with the U.S. State Department, and why I'm running for the council this year is very, very simple. I think I've been asked this a number of times since we started this process, and it is simply to help. My family and I have lived here in Mill Valley for seven years. We've been benefactors of the wonderful city, all of the infrastructure, all of the services, certainly the schools. We have three boys. They've gone through the elementary school systems here, the middle school and the high school, and we feel like this is probably the most wonderful city that we have ever lived in, and we've lived in a number of cities across the world. So in running for the council, you know, I think of it as just a continuation of my life in public service. So throughout my entire career, I have dedicated myself to serving others. So right out of high school, spent some time in the Marine Corps, in the military. After that, was in the private sector as a scientist, and later on the business side to develop lifesaving therapeutics and drugs, and then currently, of course, work in the federal government and look to apply all those skill sets in terms of helping our country and spreading American culture and values across the globe. So if elected to the council, I hope to bring all of those experiences here into Mill Valley and apply them within our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Now for the questions. Candidates will each have one minute to answer. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which questions are asked. Candidates, please feel free to ask me to repeat the question. We will begin with Leah Curtis. First question. What are the most critical issues the Mill Valley City Council will face in the next two years? What qualifies you to address these specific issues? Leah?
Thank you for the question. One of the biggest issues, which is kind of a puzzle in itself turning into one issue, is infrastructure. I've personally seen, not worked on through the city, but through my professional career, the hazard mitigation plans at the city and county and multiple cities across the county have been working on in regards to disaster preparedness and to mitigating the impact those could have on our city. One of the big issues we have is our infrastructure, which we will be addressing with Measure L this November, and that's something that we need to sorely have done and educate the community on the purpose behind those improvements when it comes to not just our recreation, not just what makes Mill Valley beautiful and a wonderful place to live, but makes it safe and invest in the longevity of why we all live here. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks. Caroline?
Okay. The two top issues in the next two years, I'd actually argue there's three, but I'm going to go with the top two, which are emergency preparedness and fire safety, as well as addressing our aging infrastructure. So the safety of our community is our city's top priority, and it's a constant concern. Many of us are already aware of the effects of climate change and the more extreme weather experiences throughout our country, and that includes Mill Valley. We're particularly vulnerable to floods, wildfire, and landslides, and we experienced actually our first red flag two months earlier this year than we had previously. So it is a sign of things that are changing. It's a sign of things that we need to be prepared. I support the city's current efforts, but I also want to see more efforts working with our neighborhood response groups. We have a patchwork of neighborhood response groups, and my concern is that in an evacuation, we need to get everybody off the mountain, down onto two main streets, and into a safe area.
Catherine?
I think that two issues that we will be addressing as a community in the near term, in addition to the excellent answers, descriptions of our wildfire resilience work that needs to be done and our community infrastructure, is going to be around really thinking holistically around how to reimagine Mill Valley as a community that relies substantially less on fossil fuels and how we've already kind of picked a lot of the low-hanging fruit when it comes to reducing our GHGs and how to transform our community in a way where we are reaching our climate action goals. And then the other area that I think is going to be really important to our community in the next few years is thinking about community vitality and how Mill Valley can survive sort of this revolution in retail sales. We have a lot of empty buildings downtown, and how to really rethink downtown as a space where people gather and how to bring more shops into our downtown spaces. So those are two of the major issues I think are in the near future.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I would absolutely agree with Kat on that latter one. I think my two issues in terms of where I would focus on and that bubble up to the top of the priorities amongst all the critical issues that have been brought up is the growth of small businesses here in the city, and second, the housing issue, right? How do we add housing to the city, working with the state mandates and doing so in intentional way? I think from a small business perspective, as Kat said, if you walk around parts of Mill Valley, there are a lot of empty storefronts here. So having a business background, my sense is that we really need to focus on how to grow that small business, how to do so with intention and do so in a way that organically grows diversity in the city as well, too. I think from a housing perspective, I will say the same thing, intentionality in terms of how we plan for newshousing developments within Mill Valley to make sure that we keep the culture of the city, the charm of the city, all of that intact while we're still trying to meet these state mandates, which are very challenging and aggressive mandates to meet. I think that will be an absolutely critical issue over the next several years. Thank you.
Urban?
I hope this isn't a COVID-spreading event. So keeping Mill Valley beautiful, keeping it safe, and keeping it vital are the three most important things. So keeping it vital, so we are working together right now with businesses in town, trying to understand how to remove the barriers to getting a new permit. And our objective is to be able to issue permits within 30 days if there's no safety, visual, parking, or noise impact. So that's the first thing. That's something which is going on right now. Safety is all about Measure L. I started working on Measure L four years ago. I was the council lead on the Infrastructure Task Force that led to Measure L, and I'm the lead in putting together Measure L on the ballot. So that's clearly our initiative there in order to get funding, in order to fund all of the safety improvements we want to make. And then keeping Mill Valley beautiful is really about how we implement the housing plan, and we want to be able to improve the amount of affordable housing we have in our city without destroying the fabric of our city, the thing which makes it so beautiful, the thing which attracted us all to Mill Valley in the first place. Thank you very much.
Thanks. The next question is going to be... The answers will begin with Catherine.
Lynda? Catherine or Caroline?
Catherine. Sorry. As with most Marin cities, Mill Valley faces a significant challenge in meeting the state's housing quotas. For Mill Valley, that means 865 new housing units by 2031. What specific actions do you support to meet this mandate?
While the 865 number is a really difficult number for Mill Valley to reach, we are experiencing a housing crisis, and I think that Mill Valley is taking really aggressive and creative actions to get to that number. They're doing it in a number of ways. The city has already created zoning and code changes to reduce parking requirements, allow increased density, smaller units. There is the One Hamilton project that's already been approved that is going to be moving forward with 45 units. ADUs will be an important component of that. I think there's 200 planned to be developed in the next 10 years. And then there's also creative work being done through Home Match, finding homes for people who might work in Mill Valley but cannot afford to live in Mill Valley, and matching them with homeowners who have extra space. And the Mount Tam Community Land Trust, which is looking at a few properties right now. SV9, a lot-split ordinance that's going to come before the city council in 2025. So I think there's a lot of ways that the city is looking at this.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you for the question. I think, again, this was one of the things that I brought up as one of the most critical issues that the city has to face over the next several years. From my perspective, right, creativity is going to be the king of the day. In terms of creativity, what I think of that is incentivizing homeowners, right, to create more ADU units, right, so that we don't... We have limited geography here in the city, right? And so as you plan out new units, there's very few places where you can put new developments. So I think one of the things to do is you have to incentivize the actual developments that are there, the actual houses that are there, whether residential or residential, right, to increase that number. So I think building up on those ADUs will be one way, and I think I'll go back to what I said before, right? The intentionality of how we do it and where we put these developments is going to be extremely important, again, to maintain the culture, the charm of the city that we think of as Mill Valley right now.
Thank you. Urban?
Yeah, thank you. So I was the council lead in developing our housing element, which is our eight-year housing plan, so... And what does that housing element do? So we took a very different approach than most of the cities around us. Most of the cities around us that are small focused specifically on doing more accessory dwelling units, and that's precisely what we decided not to do because accessory dwelling units put density up into the hillside where there's fire risk, and it puts it in areas where you've got flood risk. What we decided to do instead is to concentrate development along Miller Avenue and Camino Alto. That's our housing plan. And it creates housing that we don't have right now, which is small units. Smaller units allow people that are younger to move into our city because they're more affordable, and allows people that are older to downsize their housing and stay within Mill Valley. What we're finding is implementation of the housing element is really the key. So developing it was hard, but implementing it so that you actually create that housing is the hard part. And what we're doing is we're working together with developers to understand the impediments that they've got in actually creating the housing on those sites that are along Miller and Camino Alto. Thank you.
Thanks. Leah?
Thank you. I will just say that I echo a lot of what I've heard from my fellow candidates. Gives me butterflies, honestly, hearing Mayor Carmel talk about the thoughtful process, especially when it comes to emergency preparedness and thinking about traffic flow, evacuation safety, housing density, et cetera. And that is one of the main reasons that we don't push for higher density up where there is higher risk because we don't want to provide people with unsafe homes. We want to provide them with homes that they deserve so that they can live safely and happily, as we all do in Mill Valley. I think it's a multi-pronged approach. It was mentioned ADUs. There are programs that help facilitate housing, social aspects like Home Match, but it doesn't necessarily provide new homes. I love the concept Mill Valley is pursuing about adding condominiums potentially so that folks who are perhaps like myself 10 years ago moving in, they have an opportunity to get into Mill Valley and go on from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Caroline?
Lynda, can you repeat the question?
Sure.
As with most Marin cities, Mill Valley faces a significant challenge in meeting the state's housing quota. For Mill Valley, that means 865 new housing units by 2031. What specific actions do you support to meet this mandate?
Okay, since I ran out of time...
I want to be really quick, but 865 units constitutes a 600% increase from our last housing cycle. So this is a real significant, actual challenge for our city to meet. However, I actually...
Hold the mic closer.
I actually see the... Blinking. Do you want me to restart?
Your button's on the mic and we get pressed?
Now we're good? It's working now. We should have a nice stop in time.
Right. Okay.
Do you want to shut up?
Eight hundred sixty-five units, 600% increase from our last housing cycle. So it is a real and actual challenge for our city to meet, although I will say that the city has to do this. It's a good faith effort that we're putting forth, and so what I would say and my approach is that I see this as a real opportunity, and it's an opportunity to provide the kind of housing that's lacking in what we need here in Mill Valley, which is affordable housing. So to echo some of our other comments made, it is a multifaceted approach because you have to push on multiple fronts. To this end, there's six different pieces of it. ADUs and junior ADUs, rezoning sites for possible multi-unit, mixed-use development, utilizing the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund and leveraging public and private partnerships, maybe purchase properties, convert them to affordable housing. We also want to develop relationships with organizations such as Mount Tam Community Land Trust, our Community Housing Foundation, and Home Match to create affordable housing options. Now, right now, those Home Matches don't count as units, but we're trying to work with Assemblymember Demine Connolly so that we can figure out in Sacramento how these do constitute units because this really is creating more housing and what we need here in Mill Valley. I'm encouraging streamlining the process for homeowners to build ADUs, and then also monitor the changes in our state laws. This is very important because we need to be proactive in terms of adapting to our local laws and staying ahead of what the state... Because we do not want the state coming in and doing housing for us.
Thank you. I've been asked to remind everybody in the audience that if you wish to give me a question to ask the candidates, there should be cards and pencils on your tables. Just raise your hand, and Carol will come and pick them up. Okay, next question. Caroline, you're going to be on again. You're going to be first on this one. Next question. What changes or improvements would you make regarding fire and emergency safety measures to protect Mill Valley? How would you promote education and planning around disaster preparedness? Caroline?
Yes. So given our topography and changing climate, we need a robust emergency preparedness. It's crucial for Mill Valley. It's crucial for our safety and also for our resilience. I am concerned, as I noted earlier, about our evacuation in our town, down from the mountains, down to our two main roads, and that would be one of my focuses. We have a Google study which informed us to take one car, and the city has just started that campaign, "Take One Car and Save the Life Behind You." So we'll be amplifying that message. That's one thing of the education. And we also need to broadcast this message out because our first responders are not going to be everywhere, everywhere we need them, up on the mountain and directing traffic. So we need to likely go through the community to help them, and again, organizing the neighborhood response groups. And then we're learning from our county Office of Emergency Management that only 30% of our residents and businesses are signed up for Alert Marin. This is the first time that you're going to get a notice to what's going on and then to evacuate. So it's really important that our community sign up for that.
Thank you. Catherine?
Wildfire risk is one of the greatest risks to our community. I'm heartened to see that we all agree on that, and I know we need to work at the landscape level across jurisdictions, which is what I did as Director of Government Affairs and Public Grants for One Tam. I worked across all of the agencies on Mount Tam to secure public funding for wildfire resilience projects because wildfires are not going to follow jurisdictional lines. And so that also means working closely with the Marin Wildfire Prevention Agency on projects to create shaded fuel breaks, defensible space. to create shaded fuel breaks, defensible space at the landscape level. But what I'm really excited about, potentially on the City Council, is working at more of the neighborhood scale, working to create more firewise communities, neighborhood response groups, so that we feel as a community that we are really working to create defensible space at a neighborhood scale and really looking out for our neighbors so that when an emergency does happen, that we know to take one car out. We have NICSIL alerts, and we are calling and knocking on doors of our neighbors to make sure that everyone gets out safely.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. And again, I don't think there's any question that emergency preparedness is one of the top critical issues here within the council. I'm going to speak as actually a Mill Valley citizen versus as a candidate to answer this question. One of the things that I would love to see more, and it was touched on by my fellow candidates here, is I've written two things down, education and engagement. So I think the planning, I think the City Council and all the different elements of the city have done a wonderful job in terms of emergency preparedness and planning. What I would love to see more is education, so pushing that out to the public and making what those preparedness measures and what those plans are, making those known. And I think that would lead to engagement as well, too. So getting as many community groups engaged in that planning and in that preparedness, I think that's going to be key so that when an actual emergency does happen, that everybody, as many people as possible, as many citizens as possible here in the city, know what to do, know the services that are available, and are prepared to take action either individually, as groups, as Catherine said, as neighborhoods, and as a citywide element. Thank you.
Thanks. Urban?
Yeah, thanks. So one of the things you learn as a City Council member is that because we sit in the nexus of all the information, we have a lot of data, but getting that out to individuals is incredibly hard, regardless of what topic you're talking about, whether it's housing or it's transportation or it's emergency preparedness. Getting people to understand what they need to do is really hard. So like I said, I was the chair of the Buildings and Grounds for the West Point Inn, which sits very firmly in the wildland urban interface, and this is what we did. One, we pulled back all the vegetation, and we really hardened the area about 50 feet around the entire structure. But here's the other thing that was really important. We hardened the structure itself, and that means reducing all of the apertures that you've got on the structure so that embers can't get in. Because in a firestorm, it's the embers which burn the house, and they literally burn the house from the inside out. The embers get into the attic, they get underneath decks, they set fire to the leaves that have collected, they break the windows, right? So when embers hit windows and the glass is not tempered, the glass actually breaks. It sucks the embers into the house, and the house burns from the inside out. So getting people to understand how important it is to harden the structure itself is incredibly important.
Thanks. Leah?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What changes would you make -- make sure I got the right one here. What changes or improvements would you make regarding fire and emergency safety measures to protect Mill Valley? How would you promote education and planning around disaster preparedness?
Thank you. Well, this is my day today. And these are all great, again, heartwarming comments from my fellow candidates, seeing the education coming to life. First off, we need to model the example that we want to see from individuals in our community. It takes individuals, our whole community, taking part on the level that they can and lowering the barriers to engagement that keep them from being able to engage. So whether that's apathy, whether it's a lack of risk awareness, I like to think of it as a threat becomes a risk when you're in it. So you might have a shark in a tank, you've got the threat in the tank, but it becomes a risk to you when you're in that tank with it. And we are in the tank. We are in the wildland urban interface. We have these threats posed to us every day when it comes to fire, when it comes to climate change, impact on flooding, on mudslides, et cetera. It's so much more. It's all hazards as well as fire. But we individually have to take the steps to prepare through Alert Marin is the one you want to sign up for evacuation warnings and orders. We have to take care of our neighbors, and we just have to be honest about where we live and the improvements that we can individually make when it comes to vegetation management so that you save your home, you save your neighbor, you save your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on to that mic.
Okay.
This is the question we're going to begin with, Leah. What suggestions do you have for providing services to a growing population of senior residents? How would you balance the needs of this older population with the needs of younger parents and their children?
Fantastic question. Thank you. So this is something I see, again, in my volunteerism in the community. In my own street, we have very young families, we have older residents who've been around and raised their families in Mill Valley for many, many decades. It goes back to that housing issue, that housing element that Mayor Carmel and other candidates were talking about. Housing that's not only affordable, housing that's reflective of how people can live, how they need to live. So adaptable housing, maybe you're an older adult who needs to downsize into a home, not a facility, so that you maintain your independence and your quality of life, but it's something you can manage with at that stage in your life. Likewise, with the affordable housing, helping young families get their feet on the ground in our community, become part of the vitality and the inclusivity that we want to see in our city as well. Transportation is another one, and I could go on all day about that, making sure we have better, more connected, better timed transportation so we're not stuck on an island whether, what age or stage you are in life.
Thank you. Caroline?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Thanks.
What suggestions do you have for providing services to a growing population of senior residents? How would you balance the needs of the older population with the needs of younger parents and their children?
So this is an issue that's near and dear to my heart. I was initially concerned about seniors and evacuating during an emergency, and it led me to look at what the city was providing. And right now, what we provide are programs and services, but it's in a siloed framework. And so what I did was I put together an advisory group, and full disclosure, Leah Curtis is part of that advisory group. It's called Live Well Mill Valley, and it is aimed to create and support the city becoming more age and disability friendly. So we submitted an application to the AARP. Mill Valley is now part of that network, and now we are eligible for grants and funding. So importantly, what we're going to do and what we have developed with Michelle Terrell from the city and the city's support is we have a community-wide survey that's going to be going out. So we will be actually getting that data in terms of finding what is in need, what do seniors, what are they missing in terms of services, and then providing that. And our concern really is housing, isolation, transportation. We want people to age in place.
Thank you. Catherine?
I think that the intersection that you bring up around neighborhood response groups and sort of emergency preparedness and community connections has really, has been an interesting development in where I live in Blightdale Canyon, where our neighborhood response group and Firewise Community work has really created more neighborhood connections between seniors and younger families, where we now have an annual Neighbor Fest and a block party that sort of brings our communities together. And I think finding more opportunities to do work like that will be really important in the future. Other areas that have already been noted but are really important is affordable housing, allowing seniors to find more affordable places to live, aging in place. So I think that that will be something that Mill Valley should be looking at when we're meeting our affordable housing goals. And transportation, safe, reliable transportation. So I support expanding public transportation and community shuttles, as well as social connection and community engagement that programs like Mill Valley Villages are already working so hard to create, and expanding that so that younger families are included in that, participating in that work.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I think it's a great question, and I think it's incredibly important to have that community connection between young families and the aging population, right? Aging in place, I think that's incredibly important, right? So what I've seen, and again, this hits home as well, too, from my parents' perspective, my mom's perspective, she lives in a community where they have a whole number of services, and it's not, it's an active lifestyle community, right? And I look at some of those services, and I do wonder why can't we bring them here to Mill Valley or expand on the ones that we have? We have a wonderful community center. We have an incredible library here in the city. What I would love to see is additional services for both young parents, young adults, and seniors alike that brings those people to those community centers and allows them to engage. And again, that, I think, really builds the sense of community. To do that, I think we need transportation services, right? Again, whether it be for young adults, whether it be for young parents or for seniors, I think having some sort of transportation service intra-city is going to be incredibly important addition to the current mass transit that's available. Thank you.
Thank you. Urban?
Yeah, thanks so much. So this is a topic which is near and dear to my heart. If you drive by the Redwoods on a Friday night at 4:00 PM, you'll see me strumming my guitar with the seniors and singing songs. So I've gotten to know that community really well over the last five years, plus my dad just turned 99 last week, and big news, he's going to be moving to the Redwoods next month. So here are the issues that they face. Loneliness, that's a big issue. Intellectual stimulation is a big issue for them. Being able to walk to the services is a big issue, and being able to downsize their home to something which is appropriate for people essentially living as a couple, or in my case, my dad, living entirely by himself. So our housing strategy is really important. Programs that we provide to the library and the community center that we already have for loneliness and for intellectual engagement are really important. We already have transit for seniors. Seniors already have transit. They're already able to get around, and it's free for most of them. So just using that is really the solution for them to get around town better. Thank you. And I get to hold on to this.
You get to hold the mic.
Right. Perfect.
Okay, the next question. We've got quite a few iterations of this, so there might be two questions on it. Number one, how do you view Mill Valley's efforts on fostering diversity and inclusion? How would you include people with diverse backgrounds in the city's decision-making process?
Oh, that's a great question. So I got elected in March 2020. Within a week, we had COVID and the pandemic, and at my third council meeting, George Floyd was murdered, and we had a big ruckus at the City Council. So I've been steeped in this from the very, very beginning. We pivoted immediately the City Council strategy in 2020. We spent the entirety of that year developing a very detailed DEI plan for the city that we approved at the end of the year and that we've been implementing ever since. Every department has got a DEI strategy. Every commission in the city government has got a DEI initiative and a set of strategies. So we are frankly the leaders within Marin County on DEI. Other cities come to us to ask for our advice on how to do DEI better. We've implemented into our police department, we were the first police department to do RIPA data, reporting out to the community. We were the first city to have a police oversight committee to ensure that everybody gets treated equally by the police department. So I think we've done a really good idea, and my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah?
Thank you. So my background, I serve on the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee at Southernman Fire District. So it's something that I hope I can also bring to the city of Mill Valley and City Council. I think the first thing we have to ask ourselves is what can we do as a City Council? What is our role in increasing diversity, equity, inclusion, and that sense of belonging? And I think the grassroots of it is it has to be the through line in everything that we do and every decision that we make for our whole community to make sure we are working through a lens of equity, no matter your background, your age, your income, where you see yourself in five years. Making sure our community is accessible, inclusive, and then you foster that sense of belonging and safety that people, no matter who they are, who want to be part of the community, have the access. There are no barriers for that engagement. I'm excited to hear about a number of the efforts the city has made, and something that I always personally do and would love to bring to the council is that gut check. Are we performing? Does this feel good? Or are we actually delivering on what we want to see our community be?
Thank you. Caroline?
Yeah, so improving DEI efforts, this is an ongoing commitment. It requires three things. Structural change, community engagement, and then, I'm sorry, community education and broad engagement in our community. So we've made significant progress as a city, but there's always room for improvement, and there's more work to be done because it is an ongoing process. So we've integrated DEI into our decision-making process. Every staff report we get not only has a fiscal impact, but it has a DEI impact. So we are always thinking about that, and we're seeing things through that lens. 30 seconds. Okay. Mill Valley Police Department actively involved with RIPA and reporting to us regularly. We've specifically hired somebody to lead our DEI initiative, so this keeps it top of mind for all City Council and staff. And we implemented DEI training. So City Council members go through DEI training. Our commissioners can do that as well, and our youth sports leagues, our coaches do it when they use our fields for rental. It's part of that condition. Moving forward, I'm advocating two key areas, that we continue strengthening our partnerships with allied organizations and community members to better understand their experiences, and then also applying the DEI lens to everything that we do, working towards a Mill Valley where everyone feels safe, is treated equitably, and is welcome.
Thank you. Catherine?
So there's two major areas that I think the city has made incredible strides in diversity, equity, inclusion since June 2020, and that's in policing and expanding, moving towards expanding opportunities for affordable and equitable housing in Mill Valley. In terms of, at the Parks and Rec Commission, there has been, every commission, as Urban alluded to, has a Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Group, a JDI group. And that commission, through the Parks and Rec Commission, there's been movement to make the annual Juneteenth celebration, annual now, in Mill Valley, to have DEI training for all sports coaches, improvements to the Parks and Rec Scholarship Program. But at the city level, we're talking about bringing in more diverse voices, and there's a few ways that I think the city is moving towards that. And one is that there's a new state law, SV329, that allows small but meaningful increases to stipends for people who serve on commissions and city councils, and also adjusting times so that more people can go to work and then come and speak at these meetings. So whether those are, you know, no longer at 8:00 PM, but more likely at 5:30, 6:00 PM, so people can get home to put their kids to bed as well.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I think this is an incredibly important issue. In all my walks of life and different careers that I've had, one thing I've learned that there is incredible amount of strength in diversity. So this is an incredibly important issue to me. I've led a number of federal-level task forces to improve diversity in federal agencies. I would love to bring that experience here to Mill Valley. How would you do it? I think having the education in place in terms of diversity education, I think, is great. I think having the plans in place to give you the targets, that's fantastic. I also think beyond that, holistically, how do you grow diversity in a city? I think from my perspective, two ways, right? The small business, encouraging female-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned, senior-owned businesses to set up shop, and making it easy for them to do so in the city is one organic way to increase diversity. The other one is, of course, as Catherine mentioned, the affordable housing, right? Making sure that housing is affordable to folks that fall into DEIA, as we say in the federal government for accessibility, into those categories, making sure that it's accessible and, again, incentivizing people to come into the city under those pretenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold the mic. Hold that mic. Hold that mic, Mike. Okay, related to DEI, but a little more specific. How would you address racist incidents in Mill Valley? Please focus on kids who don't have friends from diverse backgrounds. And a related question, do you believe that the City Council should take a position on social issues as it did after the George Floyd incident? Mike?
Thank you. I think the first part of that question, it really hits home to me. I have three boys. One just graduated from Tam High School last year, one's a senior at Tam this year, and I have one in the middle school, MBMS. I know some of you might be familiar with some of the incidents that happened at Tam last year with respect to racism. And I think that what we need to do there, right? Racism is a byproduct of ignorance. And so from an education perspective, from a perspective of trying to get different communities to interact with each other, I think we have to have a lot more engagement with the townships and the cities that are around us that are more diverse than Mill Valley. And I think you've had that engagement at the city level, at the school level, right? At the individual level, I think that goes a long ways. I think that goes a long ways to improving how we address issues of racism. I do think, to answer the last part of that question, I do think the city council needs to take a stance, right? This is an incredibly important issue, and it can't be one that the leadership of the city defers off.
Thank you. Urban?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So as mayor, I've already had to deal with racism several times. And what I do is I start the meeting by specifically talking about what has happened and talking about how important it is to not allow hate to flourish in our town, to put a very hard line underneath that. And again, I've had to do that several times since I've been mayor over the last year. So that's really, that's really critical. I think that our integration with Marin City, frankly, is the most important thing that we can do. We really need to be more integrated, starting at a younger age. We have racism in our community because kids show up at high school, and it's quite literally the first time that they are being exposed to anybody that's different than them, and that's too late. They need to be exposed at a much younger age. It can start through sports. Hopefully, it can start through the school system. It absolutely needs to have a housing component to it, to be part of it. But that's really an essential part of it. Should the city be involved in it? City is involved in it already. We already take a stance. Whenever we've got a local nexus, and racism is certainly a local nexus, the city council is involved. If you watch the tape from the night that George Floyd was killed, and we discussed it, Wickham, myself, and the city manager all talked about how important it was that we do things locally in our town against racism in the wake of George Floyd. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah?
Thank you. I echo some of the comments we've heard already. I do think it's, as leaders at the city council level, again, asking ourselves, what is our role? What is our purpose? It's modeling, it's modeling the behavior that we want to see out of our community. And racism is not something we want to see. It's not something we want to represent. And as representatives of the community, if that's something that comes up, that's something we should comment on. We are part of the community, and I believe as leaders in Mill Valley, we need to, we need to comment when these issues are addressed. Agree on more collaborative programs, more integrative programs throughout, throughout school and clubs, which we have many. There's the soccer clubs that we have, again, programs with Marin City and surrounding communities for intern programs, which I'm excited to see. Of course, our golf club as well has been part of those. But seeing that more genuinely throughout our youth, so that you don't have to wait until high school to have your first exposure to how diversity looks, how people live outside of your bubble. Thank you.
Carolyn?
Well, I appreciate this question because I think you see the consequence of not living in a diverse community. So the racist incidents that have been happening at the high school this past year and years past is very disconcerting. I think it's put into the city council a call for more collaborative and more communication and working with the school district because while we serve in parallel, we serve the same community. So we really should be working together to, whenever we see something, we say something. And we make sure to communicate to the community that this is something that we are not going to tolerate. There's no place for it in our community and any community. So in order to be a better leader myself, I participate and stand up for racial justice where every couple months, we get together local electeds and discuss what's happening in our communities and share the experiences and what we're doing about them. And that's been very helpful because it always keeps in mind about what am I doing? So to Leah's point, it's not just about going to events or holding other events. It's like, what are you doing? You are making yourself accountable. The other piece is, in terms of social issues, I think that the better format, maybe not in city council because it's so formalized in that way, but having town halls. And so those, maybe we see more of those community meetings happening at the community center along with the school district.
Thank you. Catherine?
I think what Urban noted, where the first time that a lot of students in Southern Marin see one another is the first day at Tam High, is really one of the major issues that we need to combat. Because getting to know one another at an earlier, at an earlier date will create comfort and friendships and relationships that I think will mitigate the issue when they get to high school. And so at the Parks and Rec, at the Parks and Rec Department, we have a community center in Mill Valley that has worked, the department is working really hard to make improvements to the Parks and Rec Scholarship Program so that there's more inclusive approaches to address financial need to support a more diverse community. So starting at the sports programs. And then also, I think there isn't a way that the school board and the city council can have more conversations than they have in the recent past so that, you know, these issues don't come as a surprise, that we are working together from the outset to know what's going on within our schools. So having meetings, subcommittees that meet together would be really helpful.
Thank you. Hold that mic. The next question. What actions do you believe should be taken by the Mill Valley City Council to maintain and enhance the city's business community?
So I think that some of the, the issue is that our community is, has a phenomenal downtown that is the crown jewel of our community. And the depot, and its expanded depot is really so important to our community vitality. And right now, we have a number of vacant storefronts. And also, the question of what to do with our bank buildings is really important as those shutter. So I recently voted yes on a measure that would allow expanded events on the plaza and give the staff more, the city staff more ability to approve events with certain guardrails to make our community spaces more lively. I know that the city is really looking, taking a close look at the process for, the conditional use process, conditional use permit process, and also our parking requirements for downtown. Because I think that we should be looking at allowing certain businesses to open downtown without spending an inordinate amount of time and money, looking at parking and getting a conditional use permit before they can open.
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. I think the business community here in Mill Valley is a huge part of what actually makes Mill Valley as great as it is, right? Having come from an entrepreneurial background, I think it's incredibly important that we support small independent businesses coming into the city and being able to set up shop and being able to thrive here. In talking with some of these small businesses, right, what would make it easier? Permitting would make it easier, I think. Mayor Carmelo said some issues in terms of how we can make that easier for them. I think we should continue to look for ways that we can incentivize these businesses to set up shop here. I think looking at other incentives, again, I'll go back to what I said before, in terms of looking for diversity, right? And using that small business community to grow diversity in the city is going to be important. So I'll say again that we should stress, right, incentivizing female, minority, veteran, senior-owned businesses to set up shop in here in the city. And again, make it easy for them to do so through a number of different incentive schemes. Thank you.
Thank you. Urban?
Yeah, this is a great question. This is one of the top things that I want to work on over the next couple of years. We've already started. So as a planning commissioner, we all wanted to redo the parking standards that we've got for downtown. And I'm happy to say, after decades, literally, of delay in that, we've finally started that process. So we've actually hired a consultant to work on revised parking standards for downtown. That'll be a big, a big improvement. Secondly, we just, as Kat just said, we just passed a change in our ordinance for the use of the depot plaza. We've eliminated the number of, the constraints that we have on the number of events that we can have on the plaza every year. So that should add vitality to downtown. We are investing in our arts commission. We significantly increased their budget to bring more arts projects and events to downtown to bring more vitality. And then what I do is I take the planning director and the city manager and myself, and we go and visit a business once a month. We sit down, we talk about what did it take to get this business open? What are the things that we could do better? What do you see in other communities, things that we can do in our city to improve the process? And we're basically copying those ideas. We're trying to make it so that it's easier to start a new business in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Leah?
Thank you. Well, it's, it's great to hear that the city's already addressing these issues. And it fills my heart with a little bit of sadness every time I see some of the closed businesses and talking to some of the small business owners who popped up before or during the pandemic. One of the big issues was, was rent, the cost of rent. They basically got priced out of being able to continue their business, their livelihood and their passion in our city because they couldn't afford to keep it open. So before they have to shutter those doors, having those open conversations, having those check-in, those wellness checks with our business leaders, with our business owners and operators, what's working for you? What can we do to help you thrive, to help drive people to, to your storefront, to, from the community, to your door, so that we can all serve and enjoy the services that they offer? I'd love to explore ways to, to encourage and entice different kinds of businesses, too. We got a lot of lovely bakeries and nail shops, but, and rug stores, but I would love to see diversity in that realm as well, and making sure people can actually get to these businesses, whether they're young families, older adults, et cetera.
Thank you. Caroline?
Yeah, this is a great question because, sorry, our small downtown businesses are changing, and that's true in our town as well as other small towns. So we value our local-serving businesses. And for a number of years, I did sponsorships for Little League and helped with Kido, and I saw how our businesses really did bridge the gap in terms of funding for needed programs and services at our schools and in our sports, youth sports. Fortunately for us, we have a very active Mill Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I'm grateful for them, and I'm actually a member as well. But what they have done is they've made that adjustment as well as city. The city has made adjustments to the changing nature. So the city, as we've already mentioned, streamlining the permit process, really working and reaching out to businesses to figure out what is going on, what is working and what is not. Again, the difference is in terms of how we use the plaza, that's now reflected in increased use in terms of we're going to stay longer, more people can have events there. So that's really reflective of having more people in our downtown area and as well, events that bring people in our town. Always grateful for the creativity that is here in Mill Valley, and that includes bringing new events such as the Mill Valley Music Festival because we are going to be dependent on visitors coming to our town and spending time as well as spending their money.
Hold the mic.
Hold the mic.
This is the last question. There's more coming in, but I don't, I'm not going to have time for them. So, last question. What goals should the city council have in planning for climate change? What ideas do you have to expedite the transition to clean and renewable energy in Mill Valley, including infrastructure for EV vehicles?
In one minute. So I am very proud to be part of a council in a city that is climate-conscious. So when I first came on board on the city council, one of the things that we did is to approve and review the updated climate action plan. So we are very fortunate, as I said, we've got an embarrassment of riches in our town when it comes to talent, creativity, intelligence, and caring for our community. And so what the Climate Action Task Force put together, a 95-page report that basically gives us a roadmap ahead on what we can do. So we're actually following that. And in part, what's great about the city is knowing that, that's, how do we prioritize that? I'll tell you how we do it. We're going to hire somebody. So, but we're also efficient with what we have in terms of our resources, so we're going to job share. So there's a sustainability coordinator that's shared between us and Timmaron, and they work to execute the climate action plan, action items. So that is one thing. Another thing is education and figuring out how to communicate to individuals on how they can do their part. I took part in the Resilient Neighborhoods programs where you can figure out your own carbon footprint, and then you also have action items that you can take as an individual. So we do have information and resources available at the micro and the macro level so we can effectively deal with climate change.
Thank you. Catherine?
The city is moving really aggressively towards making Mill Valley a more climate-resilient community. So I think that the, one of the things I'm most excited about is seeing electric vehicle infrastructure, not only at private homes, but also in public spaces so that people who might not have the infrastructure in their own homes or apartment buildings can charge their vehicles so that we can really move that percentage target of 35% of passenger vehicles in Mill Valley and Marin County to be plug-and-electric by 2030. Right now, there's a grant from the city that the city is part of for the Southern Marin Consortium to receive federal funding for 46 EV chargers at public buildings throughout Southern Marin, which I think is really exciting. The other areas that I'm excited about and that we're going to need a lot of funding to support our residents to move forward on is going to be around electrification. So how do we support residents to replace our, you know, our home appliances when those are, have reached the end of their lives so that we can move towards a more electric, or electric grid?
Thank you. Mike?
Thank you. And I think I feel like I'm going to be a little bit repetitive here, reading through the Climate Action Plan, I think, 2030, right? It's a wonderful plan. I think it has some very challenging and excellent goals, right, to accomplish. I think from my perspective, the EV charging infrastructure is probably one of the most important pieces of that. Not everybody has the ability to charge electric vehicles at their own residence. So having public infrastructure for that, that supports transition to EV vehicles is going to be incredibly important for the city. I think also looking for incentives for either residential, commercial properties to, as they transition away from carbon fuels and use of sustainable energy sources, trying to incentivize that, whatever we can do from the city level to help that process and speed that process along, I think is going to be very important.
Thank you. Urban?
Yeah, thank you. So I was the council lead on the Climate Action Plan that everybody's referring to, and I was also co-chair for sustainability countywide on a commission for the mayors of Marin County. So here's some good news. One, our grid is already 98% clean. Number two, 40% of all new car sales in Marin County are EVs. Mill Valley had the second-largest greenhouse gas reduction in the prior planning cycle, and our plan is the most aggressive that we've got throughout all of Marin. What can residents do? Over the next eight years, when one of your cars reaches end of life, replace it with an electric vehicle. Number two, electrify your home. Number three, compost. There are already huge incentives in place for all of these things. So for example, we replaced our stove, which a gas stove, with an electric stove, and most of that cost was covered by grants. These are already readily available. And if residents do those things, we will very easily reach our target. Here's the final bit of good news. Our target was a 47% reduction in our greenhouse gases over the next planning period. We've already done 28% of that. So we're already more than half of the way there. Thank you.
Thanks. Leah?
Thank you. Looking at the data and the numbers is always a good way to test, are we, are we achieving what we're saying we, we hope to? And I was enlightened myself, looking at the numbers in regards to our greenhouse gas reduction, the emissions impact. Mill Valley is one of the leading cities achieving that, according to the timeline that we have. Again, the sustainable sourcing that the city's doing is another step in the right direction, being mindful about how and what we use. But I think it does come down to the education of individuals, empowering and educating them on what is already available, what options they already have, reducing the barriers to engaging with those programs, if there are, so that they can make that individual impact themselves. Another thing that I'm curious about, looking at the transit, is reducing the idling time for those cars that are in our city, commuting back and forth to Whole Foods or back and forth to work, making sure that we adapt, perhaps through our infrastructure, that we're not sitting there idling in traffic when we could be making better use of our resources. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the question portion of this forum. Before the candidates make their closing statements, here's some useful information about the about the election. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th. Monday, October 7th, the Marin County Elections Department began mailing ballots to all registered voters. Official ballot drop boxes are now available. You can vote in person at vote centers. Some will be open 11 days before Election Day. All will be open by November 2nd. October 21st is the last day to register online to vote. After that, you can still register to vote in person. And now the candidates will make closing statements of one minute. We'll go in reverse order of the opening statements, starting with Mike Coop.
Well, thank you all for your time today. It's been, it's been an honor, a pleasure here to be able to talk a little bit about key issues here in Mill Valley. So, you know, in terms of closing statements, one thing I would say is that, you know, I'm a newcomer here to Mill Valley politics, and I think I could bring a fresh perspective to the city council, right? I'm the one candidate here that is not already sitting inside the city government. So I could think I can bring a fresh perspective, but not a naive perspective. I come with a whole career in different walks of life, right? Whether from the military, in the private sector, in the federal government now, I think I bring, I think I can bring all of those experiences to bear here on the city council. And again, just hope to be able to serve the city and make the, the city better and for not only ourselves, but our kids and their kids as well. So thank you again for your time.
Thanks. Catherine?
Thank you so much for your time today. I come to this election with a couple of varying experience and perspectives. I have extensive experience as a lawyer and a planner with the county of Marin, and I understand the value and importance of really engaging with and serving the public. My experience on the Parks and Rec Commission has given me the opportunity to work closely with our amazing staff and to engage with the community on such diverse issues as improvements to our softball field and events at the depot. I also just love Mill Valley, and I think that the values I bring as a product of Marin, coupled with my ability to listen to others and work across differences, and the efficiency of a busy mom, would make me a great fit for the city council. As a mother of three young children, every decision I would make would be through the lens of long-term sustainability and health for our community and for future generations. I also have experience navigating large-scale wildfire and sea level rise mitigation public grants across jurisdictional boundaries in Marin, which has helped prepared me to engage, help Mill Valley leverage public dollars and match funds for maximum community benefit. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Caroline?
So thank you for your time today. I'm grateful to have lived in Mill Valley for so long and to have found ways to be involved in our community. For the last 18 months, I've enjoyed my time on council, and I've enjoyed working to make Mill Valley stronger and better for all. With my experience in the community and my track record of collaboration, I would love to continue building on this progress and do it on behalf of all of you. I'm honored to have earned widespread community support for this reelection. I know it's difficult, and I probably can speak, it's the only time I'll speak for all of us, saying that one minute is really hard to, to respond to these questions. So for me, if you want to learn more about my campaign and why I'm running, and I hope you do, please visit my website. It's there for you to peruse. And please reach out with any thoughts and concerns. That's why I'm here, to reflect back onto the community, to fulfill your needs and services. So I hope I've earned your support today, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Leah?
Thank you. Thank you to the Mill Valley Rotary and to the League of Women Voters for hosting us and giving us this opportunity. This is the first time I've run for any kind of office. I'm not sure I knew I would, but my heart is in the community. It's in volunteerism, it's in service. And my background with our fire district, with being fiscally responsible, with our taxpayers' funds, with building connections, I manage the Neighborhood Response Group program, which you've heard about here. I started with my colleagues, the Neighbor Fest program, that we hear that our communities are still participating in and excited about to, to look, to come back to year on year, to build those connections in that community. And something I heard from the Rotary and from the League of Women Voters, from both of you, is truth and unity. And that's something I stand for, is transparency and not creating division where we don't need it, creating that sense of community and unity. And I hope to bring that to our city council, and I'd be delighted to, to talk to you more. So, thank you.
Thanks. Urban?
Yeah, thank you so much for the league, for organizing this, for Rotary, for hosting us. This has been really a pleasure. These are four amazing people. I feel like the city of Mill Valley has already won. Regardless of who is elected, you're going to have an excellent city government. It's been really an honor for me to be the mayor for the last year, to be on the city council for the last five years. We have an excellent city council. I love the group that we've got. It's a very young council, however. Everybody is in their first term. If I'm reelected, I will be literally the only person in a second term. I'll be the only person who's been mayor. We need a little bit of seniority, we need a little bit of continuity, I think, in the future. A lot of the issues that we have to deal with going forward have to do with planning and have to do with transportation, they have to do with climate. Those are issues that I've been heavily involved in, not to measure Measure L, which is on the ballot. So I hope to be involved in doing those things. I've had the best time the last 12 months being your mayor. It's been really an honor. It's also been just a pleasure, one of the best experiences of my life, mostly because we've gotten a lot of things done in the last 12 months, and that's been incredibly gratifying. So thank you very much for today. I've really enjoyed it. And go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we end this afternoon's event, Ed Marshall, president of the Mill Valley Rotary Club, has a few closing remarks. Wasn't meant to be a surprise.
I, I thought you'd never ask. Okay. Thank you all for joining us, members and guests of Rotary. This is a Rotary meeting, and I really appreciate you all coming. And I'd like you to formally consider joining us. I mean, we're service above self. This is what we believe in. And we're a worldwide community, and I'm very proud to be part of wiping polio off the face of the planet, which we've been working on and basically devoted hundreds of millions of dollars to, just a little PR stuff, okay? I want to formally thank the League of Women Voters for mediating this fine event. I want to thank all the candidates. I'm proud to be a longtime resident of Mill Valley and have countless, countless members of the community step up to serve as council members. And I'm proud to be a resident of Mill Valley because of that. Thank you very much, all of you. And I'd also like the, my fellow members of the Chamber of Commerce, I want to acknowledge their presence. I love to see you now in my world. I usually come to your world when I'm not conflicted, as I said, I had a conflict last time. So with that, officially, I have to ring the bell and end the meeting. Shall I? That's what I like. Thank you.